Gladstone City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602H to consult with council regarding, concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Recognized representatives of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend the executive session. All other persons must leave the room in our respectfully requested to do so now. Members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed and the deliberations that occur during the executive session. City councilors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party. This includes without limitation, family members, other appointed officials, for example, planning commission members, library advisory board members, et cetera, city staff and volunteers, members of the public, and members of the media. The presence of the media while the city's legal council is discussing matters with this council is not intended to, nor does it waive, the attorney-client privilege that attaches to these communications and any related documentation. If a final decision on any matter is necessary, the council will make that decision when it is in a regular session. Thank you very much. So we call this session to order at, it's about 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 8th. The Gladstone City Council on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, it's 6:33 PM. The city of Gladstone is abiding my guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means, and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions were on the agenda to the meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, they were to have mailed their comments or their request to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting, and comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting, and business from the audience at the end of the meeting, to speak during either time, virtually or in person. You're again, were to have emailed the city recorder prior to noon today with your name, topic of discussion, and city of residence. And individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Mitchell.
Present.
Counselor Blough.
Present.
Counselor Labonte.
Present.
Counselor Corbett.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Administrator Betts, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right, well, I'll introduce the first part of the agenda for the meeting. We start with our consent agenda, which includes approval of the June 10th, 2025 regular minutes, approval of May bank balances, budget report for period ending May 31st, 2025, approval of May check register, department head monthly reports for June 2025, and certification of election results for May 20th, 2025. Then we'll have correspondence and Gladstone City event announcements, and then we'll move into the regular agenda. Does any counselor wish to withdraw any item, any of the seven items from the consent agenda before we take a vote on that? Nope. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by?
I'll second.
Counselor Labonte. Any discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Corbett.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the consent agenda is approved. Administrator Betts, did we have any correspondence to be introduced tonight?
We have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Gladstone City event announcements. Tammy, has anyone requested to make an announcement of a city event?
I have not, but I know that there are some individuals out in the hallway, and I can quickly check to see if anyone, you might want to make that announcement again.
All right, I will make the announcement again. This is the time for anyone who would like to present a Gladstone City event announcement. Going, going, yes.
Rob had me busy.
I recognize Dr. Bob Everett.
Sorry.
And go ahead.
That's what I get for.
All right, and you can push the button, and then we'll be able to hear you.
Okay. I'm gonna be there. Just in that.
Oh, good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody, and I appreciate you allowing me the time to speak as usual. A couple things we are gonna have, there is gonna be music in the park this weekend, you know, Michelle puts that on for the community center, and we are gonna have a movie, yay! We're gonna serve, we're serving some foods, Rotary is, and we're gonna have a movie this time, and it's gonna be Top Gun. So it should be fun, come on around. The movie doesn't really get going till, you know, later on because of, because of the light situation, but it's a fun time. And, and then obviously the primary thing is, I'm gonna talk about is the festival. Few changes, it's gonna be the first and the second. We have changed things around a little bit, and that really has to do with manpower more than anything else. We're, we are actually, we are going to have the movie, and we're gonna set up on Friday for ourselves, but we've asked the vendors to not come until Saturday morning. So we're gonna have the vendors set up Saturday morning, and then they'll be there till about eight. We're gonna, we're gonna have bingo, we're gonna have the Beer Garden open, and we'll be open till about 10 with music and, and other activ, other activities that we normally sort of do. So, so there's been a little change, simply because of the time constraints more than anything else in our lives, I must admit. As we mentioned before, this will be, basically Bryce's and my last year, of sort of coordinating the event. We will, we're willing to be a part of it in helping out, and also we'll be willing to do like the Beer Garden bingo, do some other sort of things, and organize those types of things. We just won't be sort of organizing, you know, getting, getting the stage, getting the entertainment, those types of things, and organizing the vendors in the future. So hopefully, somebody will step up and sort of contact us, and we'd be more than happy to help them out, that's for sure. Beyond that, that's pretty much where we stand at this time. If I, if there are any questions, I would love to hear them, that's for sure, so.
Has a question?
I'm just clarifying, so you're, on the Friday night, you're having a movie as well?
Yes.
At the festival?
Yes.
So, and the Rotary is doing the food for that event?
We're gonna have a food vendor there.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so there will be movie and food on that Friday?
There will be movie and food on that Friday night, and that's correct, yes.
All right, thank you, Bob. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks to everybody for their work, and for taking the time to be, to do this, personally. You know, I think this is a great service that you guys, you guys do for the, for the community. Takes a lot of time, you know, more time than I would have, that's for sure. But anyway, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move on now to the regular agenda. Oh, let me just make sure, was there anyone else who requested to, for events?
Not to speak during city events, but I do have one, another agenda item.
Or another agenda item, okay. Our regular agenda will include the second reading of an ordinance 1541 as amended, new terms and conditions for continuation of an exclusive franchise agreement with Gladstone Disposal B and B Leasing. Then we will move on to Resolution 1246, a resolution of the city of Gladstone submitting to the registered voters of the city, a measure seeking voter approval for the annexation of the city into Clackamas Fire District effective July 1. I believe it should be effective July 1, 2026. And then we have an application for an appointment to a vacant planning commission position, a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule, and repealing the old master fee schedule, approval of a public improvement contract for annual slurry seal for city streets, and city council rule section R1A, commissions, boards, and committees, creation of a council committee for, to plan the Clackamas City's dinner. So we'll begin with item eight, the second reading of ordinance 1541, and we'll have staff introduce that item to us now.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, good evening, City Council. As you recall, at your June 10th meeting, this ordinance did pass six to one. There are various housekeeping updates we did, and as well as extending and changing the term of the franchise agreement with Gladstone Disposal. In the course of our conversation, you also had a very lengthy discussion regarding the word church that was used in the franchise agreement. So typically, when we have a second reading, we don't go through another staff report, we call for the second reading, but all of you were aware that the city attorney and I would be working on changing language in there, and so what we wanted to highlight is that city attorney Jacobs added a section two definition, and instead of using the word church, it's changed to places of worship, which means locations that are owned by religious organizations and are open to the public for persons to regularly assemble primarily for purposes of religious worship, such as a church, synagogue, temple, or mosque. And then, and you will also notice in section eight, we removed the word churches and replaced that with places of worship. And so if you agree to these changes, instead of just doing the second reading, we need to do two separate motions. The first one is to approve ordinance 1541 as amended, and then once that is approved, then we will call for the second reading of the ordinance as amended. And if you have any additional questions, city attorney Jacobs can answer those for you. We did check with Will and Pam, and they are amenable to the language change, and in agreement.
All right, and as I recall, I think we were all pretty much in agreement on making these changes last time, and we only had a one negative vote in order to be able to bring it back tonight.
Correct.
So let's, let's have any discussion that anybody has, well, let's, let's get a, a motion first. Would someone like to make a recommendation, a motion?
I move that the city approve ordinance of 1541 as amended.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Counselor Mitchell, and seconded by Counselor Labonte, that we approve the ordinance as amended. Any discussion? All right, Chad and Jackie, we're grateful to you for getting this done and bringing it to us in this form, and to you also for, for being agreeable to this, to this change, and for having that policy in the first place. I think it's good for the community that you've made this the way you do business in a city. So Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Blough.
Yes, and thank you.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Counselor Corbett.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. So now the ordinance has been amended, and now we need a second vote for the second reading of the ordinance as amended. Would someone like to make that motion?
I will do that.
Counselor Blough?
I move for the second reading of ordinance 1541 as amended, an ordinance adopting new terms and conditions for continuation of an executive franchise granted to Gladstone Disposal Company for solid waste, yard debris, and recycling services, and repealing ordinance 1383, 1469, and 1527.
I'll second.
All right, and just for clarification, I think you said executive franchise, the word should be exclusive franchise.
Sorry.
That's okay. And the seconded agree to that? Counselor Huckabee, okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Blough and Counselor Huckabee. Any further discussion? Okay, so we'll take a vote on the second reading. Tammy?
Counselor Corbett.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, so the second reading passes, the ordinance is now in effect. Thank you for coming tonight. You can, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're also welcome to go home if you'd like. All right. Next item, agenda item number nine, is to consider approval of Resolution 1246, a resolution of the city of Gladstone, Oregon submitting to the registered voters of the city, a measure seeking voter approval for the annexation of the city into Gladstone Fire District, Clackamas Fire District Number One, effective July 1, 2026. So again, we'll turn it over to staff and visitors for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I never thought I would say this, but it's time to get married. And you know what I'm talking about, because this has been a reoccurring theme, and this is the last piece of what we need to do to refer this to the voters. So actually, what you have in your packet is a resolution, but it's also going to have the caption, the question, the summary, and the explanatory statement that will be in the November election if you approve this tonight. City Attorney Jacobs prepared this information. I did want to just highlight a couple of things, is that this is the final step, the first step, as you recall, was that we needed to request approval from the Clackamas Fire District Board to annex. We completed that on June 10th, at the June 16th Clackamas Fire District Board. They accepted our request, and they had some very nice comments to say about our partnership going forward. So the final step is for the city council then to approve this resolution, resolution to refer it to the voters. Also wanted to highlight something under the cost impact, because wanted to be very clear that the residents understand that the city will stop collecting its fire levy of 31 cents per thousand, and also it will not collect $1.75 per thousand from its permanent rate if this is approved. And part of that is to help try to offset the cost increase that will be to the rate payers. Once this is referred to the voters, there will still be a, a public education campaign much similar to what we've already gone through. We've had open houses, we've had a webinar, we've had a survey, so we've been very transparent with the public on this process. We're very pleased with the service that Clackamas Fire provides. We had a house fire just about a week ago, and the response, and them knocking it out was just unbelievable. And so this is just really something that we are ready to move forward. If you have any specific questions about the language, I will let city attorney Chad Jacobs provide you some additional information.
All right, do councilors have any questions regarding the language here? I know we, we had another ballot measure reserved, or referred to the voters recently. There are some tight rules as far as the number of words you can have in, in things, so this is not, you can't just, you know, write whatever you want. You have to follow some rules, and, and we appreciate the work that goes into making this clear for the voters, and summarizing all the issues effectively for them to make an informed decision. Any questions from councilors?
I'd just like to make one comment.
All right, Counselor Garlington.
So one of, I, I've talked to numerous amounts of people, and handed out a lot of these little cards that I got from Administrator Betts, and everyone in Gladstone is completely behind everything that we're doing. The one question that I've gotten asked is why so soon? And I just want to reiterate what Administrator Betts said about being ahead of a potential issue, and that's why we're here. That's why we're early, because we, we're not gonna leave things till the last minute. We are crossing our Ts, we're dotting our Is, and we're getting it done. So if everybody would just trust in the process, and know that what we're getting is above and beyond anything that we could possibly produce on our own, that we as a city council, I believe, and myself especially, would appreciate the, the support from the city of Gladstone. I, I hate, I did not mean to mention everyone here, but I, I think that we've all had enough conversations that we just feel really, really strongly that this is the way we need to go.
All right, thank you for that, yes, and that will be part of our task, you know, is helping people understand this and, and make this decision, and I hope that your experience in talking to people reflects a general support from the community for this, yeah. All right, we have representatives of the department here tonight, and in case there are any questions for them as well. All right, so I think, Tammy, we can go ahead, and, oh, let's, we need a, we need a motion then on the resolution. Bottom of page 93.
Got it. I move to approve Resolution 1246, a resolution of the city of Gladstone, Oregon submitting to the registered voters of the city, a measure seeking voter approval for the annexation of the city into Clackamas Fire District Number One, effective July 1, 2026.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee, and seconded by Counselor Garlington, I believe, is that right? I didn't have my head turned that way. All right, any further discussion? Tammy, you mentioned we had somebody to talk about an item, but it is not this agenda item.
This is not the agenda.
Okay, all right. All right, let's go ahead and call the roll then.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Corbett.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, so the resolution is approved unanimously. The city recorder and city staff will help us in referring this matter to the county elections office, and we'll, it'll be on the ballot in November. Thank you. Thank you, folks. All right, next item. Item 11 is approval of Resolution Number 1247.
No, I think we're going to?
Oh.
Agenda item number 10.
Sorry, I think, oh, yep. There we go, yes. We have a vacancy on our planning commission, so we need to make appointment, an appointment to fill that vacancy. Jackie, do you have anything to say about that?
Just that this is one position for an expired term. It expires December 31st of 2026. This was recently vacated by Pat Smith. We did receive an application, I believe it is Sherri Grau, is how you say the, the last name. If I am wrong, I apologize for that. You have a copy of the application in your packet, and tonight the council can consider appointing Sherri to this position, or making another determination.
All right, I hope everyone has a chance to review the application. Commissioner Pat Smith gave several years of service, faithful service to the planning commission. We're very grateful for his involvement and his service, and he decided it was time to step down from that, and we have this opportunity to point someone who comes with some strong experience in this area, in a nearby city, and an interest in bringing that experience to the work of this city. So would someone like to make a, a motion?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Perhaps this will be for Chad, but my understanding is, for planning commissions, there has to be a balance between folks that are in certain industries and laymen, I guess. I'm not sure if that's a proper term. I'm wondering, my understanding is that we've got two members of the planning commission that are in, in the field regarding building. I'm wondering if the employment of this applicant may cause any issues as far as that, the balance that we're supposed to have on, on the commission?
Counselor Mayor Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. There are some restrictions in state and local law related to the makeup of the planning commission. If you just give me one minute, I will pull those up to make sure that I'm giving you the proper language.
And I see that the chair of our planning commission is here tonight, and as I understand, you have a, an understanding of which members of the planning commission currently fall into this category that Chad is about to read to us, so I may call on you to provide that clarification for us in a minute.
Yeah, so what the restriction is, is that no more than two voting members of the commission may engage principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit as an individual, or be members of any partnership, or officers or employees of any corporation that engages principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit. And so the question would be, is if there's already two members who meet that, would this person also meet that standard? And I believe her application says she worked for a network for Oregon Affordable Housing. Typically, in my experience, affordable housing is a not-for-profit entity, so if it's a not-for-profit, then that wouldn't be an issue here, but it'd be worthwhile to potentially get that clarification.
All right, and I'll call on, oh.
I also have a breakdown of the other members and their occupations, if you'd like to.
Well, I see it's here in, in, actually in the report, in the staff report, but as I recall from previous conversations, Natalie Smith, Chair of Planning Commission.
Yes, good evening, Natalie Smith, and I live at 345 West Dartmouth Street. We do have two individuals already, one that will be going on maternity leave here shortly, but she will be returning, that both work for large general national contractors. We haven't run into any problems as of yet, but I would like to suggest perhaps maybe we might want to leave it open a little bit longer to see if anyone else might apply as well, and I would like the city councilors, if they would please, to consider a process where we have not a laborious way of interviewing, but especially for planning commission, because it is quasi-judicial, and there are requirements, some way to where the council or any members of the planning commission would like to be involved in meeting with the individual and asking some questions, a very light interview, not a heavy one. But I know that it's, it's important that we be consistent with anyone that applies for an appointment or for a position that's vacant or whatnot, but I would like consideration for that. I don't know if you'd be willing to leave it open for another 30 to see if we get more applicants, but since we already have two, I would like to get someone more that had the same qualifications as Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith. I relied on him highly. He was knowledgeable, he was, he was an awesome planning commissioner, and also he had been in Gladstone for so long, that he had such a strong vested interest in our city, that he was just invaluable. I'm gonna miss him greatly. So is there any other questions? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and be seated.
You said two applicants?
Well, I would love to say.
She meant, she meant that we have two people currently on the planning commission, who, who may fall into the category that, that Chad described.
Right.
Andrea Langston is a project engineer for LMC Construction, a construction management firm.
Yes.
He was appointed in December 2017, reappointed in December 21. And the other one, Jennifer Volbetta, is employed by Nike in the construction industry. So it's not in the, what was the word?
Non-profit.
The sale and, the sale of, of, and development of property.
Mayor, I can read that language again for everyone, if you're interested. But the language says that they have to be engaged principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate, or be an employee of a corporation that engages principally in the buying, selling, and developing of real estate for profit. So I'm not 100% sure that Nike, being hired by Nike in the construction industry, actually satisfies that because Nike's principal business is not, you know, buying and selling real estate for profit. It's the sale of, you know, shoes and clothes and things of that nature. And the construction is secondary to their principal activities.
All right, so, so I agree. I believe, I believe that's the position where I had thought, because it was construction-related, it fell into this category, and I had it clarified for me earlier once that it didn't. But we also have this input from the Chair of Planning Commission. And, and I think it's good that we consult with the groups that, where we're seeking to appoint someone. Members of the council, what do you think of the recommendation that we, that we hold off on this one for one more month?
Oh, thank you. One, I would like to confirm whether this is nonprofit, because I believe that Attorney Jacobs is probably correct. And two, I'm fine moving forward with a vote tonight.
All right, Council Lavante, you had your lead on?
Yeah, I mean, I like, I tend to like more applicants. As a general thing, I think that theme of mine is rung true. And yeah, I'd like to have some ultimate clarification on kind of the, the balance of the commission as it's supposed to be.
All right.
You know, I'm okay. And I really appreciate Commissioner Smith's input. Thank you, Natalie, who's, you know, is a huge asset to our city, in my opinion. And I greatly respect her advice.
All right, other questions, comments? Council Garlington.
So I respect Natalie implicitly with the work that she does with the planning commission. But I have always held that, once we open up a position, I don't like to hold it over. I just, I think that the people that are interested, that really want to be there, would be there. And so for that reason, I'm ready to vote on who we are tonight.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
A motion to appoint?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Sherri Grau to the planning commission.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
All right, further discussion? Council Lavante?
Do we need a unanimous vote?
No, a unanimous vote is not required, it's just a majority vote. All right, any other questions, comments? We appreciate your input, but I think the council is, you know, and I know how busy your agenda is. You want to have a full commission, so.
And this individual seems highly, highly qualified. I just.
No question about that.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Corbett.
I vote yes.
Council Lavante.
Yes.
Council Blough.
Yes.
Council Mitchell.
Yes.
Council Huckabee.
Yes.
Council Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. So Sherri Grau is appointed to the planning commission for the term ending December 31st, 2026. I believe that we almost didn't even have this on the agenda, because the application came in close to the deadline. So summertime may not be the best time to try to fill these positions, obviously, by the number of applicants. But, and we will be sure that we get all those, those matters clarified as requested by Councilor Huckabee. But, but I think, I think Chad's instincts are probably right. This does sound like nonprofit work rather than real estate for profit. And as we have, moving forward, we're going to be asked to develop some housing production strategies as a city. And I think this commissioner just appointed will bring some good background in that, in that, to help guide us in that decision. And as in any case, anyone affected with a conflict will recuse themselves from the decision if that were to come up. All right, now we move on to item 11, which is approval of a resolution Number 1247, a resolution repealing Number 1239 and adopting a new revised master fee schedule. This is something we tend to do twice a year. And we will take a presentation from staff on this to cover the areas involved. And then I believe we will have some citizen participation as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you are correct. We bring the master fee schedule to you twice a year, typically in July, and then also in December or January, depending on where we are with increases. I'm going to spend a little bit of time going through the staff report on this, because it does affect utility rates, but in a pass-through fashion for the City of Gladstone. So what you will find, you have a copy of the proposed master fee schedule in your packet. In regards to the utility rates, the city was advised by the North Clackamas County Water Commission that effective July 1, the wholesale water rates, which are a pass-through, will increase by 5.3% from .8550 to .9,000 costs per 100 cubic feet of water. And I'm so glad I have the Public Works Director next to me, because he probably understands what I just said. That is who provides water. Okay, the second one is Oak Lodge Water Services Sewer Charge. This is a pass-through. It is increasing by 7.45% due to capital, capital cost adjustments, as well as the Water Environmental Services Charge, which is also a pass-through. They're increasing by 5%, 5.04%. The city has also updated our low-income levels applicable of July 1, 2025, based on the housing and urban development income limits. We also work very vigorously of trying to make sure that people in Gladstone are aware of those, and if they can qualify. That is also one area of our new finance manager's expertise, where she really enjoys trying to connect people to make sure and see if they qualify for the low income. So why don't I stop there and ask if there's any questions on the utility rates?
I had a question.
Councilor Blough.
So it says Exhibit B on page 11-1, on the low-income one. I don't see a exhibit.
The city recorder made copies for you. And these are the new 2025 guidelines for low income. One of the questions I was asked is, do we have a say in what NCCWC or Wes or Oak Lodge in their rate increases? And the city doesn't. These are made by their governing bodies, just like you approve policy. They have budget committees that approve their rate increases as well. And because we collect them and pass them through to them, we typically don't have a say. And I know that this can be incredibly difficult, especially, we've had, you know, comments from the Oak Lodge area. They have some big increases there. And I think that what you will find is that Oak Lodge is going through a lot of their infill, inflow work that the City of Gladstone is doing. They are being monitored by Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, for some of the similar issues that Gladstone used to have several years ago. And they're very far behind on their, their capital improvements. So that is the justification for, for their rate increases to that. We did put notice in our utility bill last month that these were coming for all the entities. And we will also put that information in the next bill that goes out.
And if I may ask, I think we spoke about this a little bit in our meeting. There's no way that we, so those sets, those rates are set, and there's also for the low income. There's, are there mechanisms where we can be more helpful with their rate? Is there, do we have any control over?
No, I mean, if the city passed a policy where you want to subsidize the rates, which I would not recommend that we do. But I do think with the low-income housing and with making sure that, you know, we do publicize it quite a bit, but a lot of people also don't want to spend the time to fill out the application or submit the required documents. But there is a lot of people in Gladstone that qualify for that type of service.
I find, and Water Environmental Services has a low-income utility assistance program in their own, because they do serve some parts of the county more fully than, than just providing sewer treatment, which is what they do here. But they have found, similarly to what we found, that not nearly all the people who probably qualify for that service have applied for the benefit. So I think, you know, what you say, getting the word out, letting people know it's there, and making sure that those who qualify are taking advantage of this is a good policy to have. We've gotten through part of this. Let me ask, on the water, wholesale water pass-through rate, that's expressed in terms of cost per cubic feet, or 100 cubic feet of water. The only part of our water sewer bill that goes out to people now that tends to vary from month to month is based on water usage. Will this change our current water usage rates? Or will we wait until January to make those changes?
Those changes will come later.
Okay.
Yes.
But it's the pass-through for sewer treatment, I think, effectively, is what these other things are. Tammy, you said we had someone who would like to speak on this item?
I do, and I'm not sure if it's this particular area that she wants to speak on, but we can bring her up here, Charity Powell.
Or I can go through the rest of the staff report first, and then.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. And Charity, you're on deck. Okay.
Okay, and then also, you will find system development charges to the master fee schedule. We use the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index for Seattle. They actually were recommending 7.9%. That was based off the December 2024. However, we are only recommending a 4% increase. We believe that's sufficient to do that, so that is what is included in there. As you recall, a few meetings ago, we removed installation and connection charges from the Gladstone Municipal Code. And we said, we're going to come back to you and put those in the master fee schedule. So this is that time when we are adding them in there. So what you will find in there is there are water installation charges, sewer connection, and additional charges and fees that we removed. This allows us to more accurately recover the actual costs of services provided by both the private and commercial development projects. Again, in the master fee schedule, those are highlighted in yellow. We did use comparable cities to come to those fees that we're implementing into the master fee schedule. In regards to the community center, we kind of had a chuckle when we talked about the 25 cents for coffee. But that is a big thing. At the community center, it is getting expensive. In the past, they've asked for donations, that's not happening. So again, if we want to charge, we've got to put it in the master fee schedule. We're also going to be talking about the community center classes later this summer. And so we are going to have fees that will range from $65 to $120 in there. That is just to cover the cost of the instructors, so there is no profit gained from the city on those. And then also, we added a credit card system at the community center, so we want to make sure that we're covering that transaction fee. And then if you move on to administration and planning fees, we do get a lot of requests for copies of the printed business license, so we've asked to put a cost in for that, just for the, the fee for printing a copy of that. So those are the changes from the various departments. And if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
I have a couple.
Okay, Councilor Huckabee.
Thank you. In, I'm looking at page 11-11, Public Works, line 211 and 212. There seems to be quite a difference in the amount these are increasing. Like one's under $200, the next one's considerably more. How do we, what methodology are we using?
The, the system development charges?
Yeah.
We just took what was currently there and increased them by the 4%.
By the 4%, okay, thank you. And then, I had a question on something else? Oh, it wasn't, actually. If you said that the community center, you know, has requested donations, and I'm pretty sure you mean by the people who go there to donate financially, would there be any way community members could donate, you know, like buy coffee and donate it to the community center? Or can we create like a, like an Amazon wishlist type thing, where people can go buy it and it just gets delivered there in order to help the community center out?
Oh, yeah, there, there's all kinds of ways of that. And I wanted to be clear that the center is not at a hardship financially. It's just that they've, they've always had a donation there, and it's not producing. So the city is now covering the cost for coffee. I also had a question about, why would you pay $1.25 for the credit card processing fee if it's only 25 cents for the coffee? And we are only accepting cash for the coffee? So I want to make that clear for that. But yeah, the community center always will accept any types of donations.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
What is the month, this is random, but what is the monthly cost typically for the coffee at the community center?
I don't have that amount.
Okay. And then the other piece is, I had a family member that worked for Visa years ago, and with a credit card. And I don't know if something's changed, but where with the licensing for Visa, it was illegal to, not illegal, like in a law way, but per their contract to charge a transaction fee on top of. So I don't know if that's something we want to look into before.
We have our contract with US Bank. So we charge transaction fees for other services through utility billing. We have the ability to recover that cost.
Okay, perfect.
All right, Charity, if you want to come forward. I think you have some comments related to the water and sewer charges, probably? Just the name and the city where you live.
Okay, my name's Charity Powell, and I live in Gladstone. And on the form, I marked that I'm just speaking neutrally on the topic, because I understand that it's a pass-through, and you guys don't actually control the utility rate increases. I just want to make sure that our city council continues to be aware of the impact on those of us that are Oak Lodge Water District people. So we moved here nine years ago, and we paid our water bill every other month, and it was the equivalent of about $40 a month. With this increase, we will now be up to between $180 and $185 a month. And we are an incredibly low-usage family. We use between three, three and five units of water a month. And so I've spoken here before, I've talked to our city staff, and I've spoken at Oak Lodge. And I just want to make sure that, right now, we are paying, I want clean water, I want our sewer processed, I want our rivers clean, I fully support all of that. And it is a really huge impact, and it's a huge increase in the nine years that we've lived here. So, because we're paying for Oak Lodge's infrastructure issues, we're paying for Gladstone's infrastructure issues, and the combined impact is disproportionate to other city members, so, community members. So I just want to make sure it's, that everyone's aware of the amount of increase that we face. So every two times a year, it's like a panic, it's like, how much is it going to go up this time? So that's all. And I think, I appreciate you guys, your work around connecting with low-income and subsidizing and those types of pieces. I think to Andrew's point, like, is, and I understand, Jackie, you wouldn't recommend it, but is there a way to like, think about our community members as a whole? And understand that like, a huge portion of our members are paying significantly less in water than those of us that accidentally bought homes in Oak Lodge Water and didn't know that that was even a thing? So are there creative solutions, or is this just the way it is? And that's fine, too, I just want to make sure. to make sure it's on your minds. So, and I guess not connected to the same agenda item, I just want to say that the community schools and the community center, what they provide for our community is wonderful. So thank you for making that happen. So, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. And I know this is, this is a source of a lot of confusion for people. Sewer districts, public utility districts overlap cities in ways that don't often coincide with the city, city limits itself. And so people always, especially those who live on the Oak Lodge side, wonder, why are my rates different? Aren't we all getting the same water, the same services? And, and it really has to do with services that take place, in some cases, a mile or so outside of where you live. But we pass them through. And Silas Richardson is here, our Public Works Director. Do you have any comment or input on this, or sort of a general explanation of why there is such a difference between the two, other than maybe economies of scale or something like that?
I think it is economy of scale, and also what Jackie mentioned is just the lack of capital improvement and trying to play catch-up with infrastructure needs. A lot of it's, again, related to the fact that the INI needs for sewer, infiltration of water into sewer lines. So from my experience, it's just been that there's a massive amount of capital improvement that needs to happen. And for districts, especially that treat water, like Oak Lodge wastewater, that can be very, very expensive to do those upgrades. So that's, that's my opinion on it.
And those of you who were on the council at the time remember that we made the choice here to use a lot of our ARPA funds for some of these infrastructure improvements, which kept the costs to our residents down for addressing the inflow and infiltration issues within our own city. I don't think that Oak Lodge Water District had access to that same level of funding, which could have kept, you know, made a reduction in the cost. But appreciate your insight into it. Appreciate your input on it. Again, we're not making a profit on this. It's pass-through. It's exactly the rates that they tell us. But, and, and we, we all pay bills for things and hate to see costs go up. The one good thing about this, I think, is, as you said regarding the conversation about the, the system development charges, when you look at the overall inflationary costs related to construction, workers, and the, the products, the, you know, the materials for this, it's a much higher rate than the level that we are making these increases. So we are kind of not just matching inflation. We are trying to keep it affordable, not affordable, that's not even the good term, but less than that, more reasonable, more predictable. And that's been, that's been one of the guiding ways that we, that we've done this.
Yeah. And I just wanted to add, Mayor, is, is that in regards to the ARPA funds, we also allocated those to enhance our low-income assistance. So in addition to the current program that you can apply for, we contracted with St. Vincent's, who allocated additional funding through ARPA for those that needed assistance. So we also used our ARPA funds towards that.
Counselor Labonte?
If I may ask, since we're kind of on the topic of water here, and the, it's been asked to me on a few occasions, and my understanding is we've got rules against well water here in Gladstone. Do we have, can folks access the water table via pipe from their yard? Is that something that we have a rule against here, or is that something we see in the city much?
I'd have to check the ordinance, but I think if you're within the boundaries of the city that supply water, a public water system, you have to be hooked to the public water system.
Yes. And in addition, can you have a-
If, if you were to have a well, there would be stipulations for backflow prevention between the meter and the house, and it would most likely be an RP assembly. But I would have to investigate that more on, 100% on the policy.
And I'll kill it after this, but let's say exterior to the house. You're not necessarily piping it into your home, but let's say for other uses, a garden, things along these-
I think we would still require an RP assembly or some sort of backflow, because you just can't prevent that cross-connection from possibly happening, a hose getting hooked to the house, something along those lines. You'd want to make sure you had cross-connection protection.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on this matter? I can accept a motion from someone. It's on the bottom of page 11-2.
Mayor, I had another comment.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Sort of along the lines with Counselor Labonte, there's a big, bold writing here. No delinquent payments owed to the city, including utilities, court fines, and any other assessed fees or charges. I just want to say I would be very open to a conversation later on down the road to discuss this, because I know a lot of families may be in a situation where they've, you know, tried to, tried to keep up and tried to keep up, and now they have this three, whatever, $400 utility payment they need to make, but they might not next month have the money, you know, for, to continue that. So I would love to have a conversation of, you know, there's something we can work around this that might better help our low-income families to, to keep up.
All right.
And I think that those conversations are already happening. Again, to reiterate, our new finance manager shared with me today how she got somebody qualified. She has some discretion there on, on making that happen. And so, yes, I think we are all amenable to trying to find ways to assist those that need it.
Thank you.
All right. And, and just to clarify for people watching who may be following along in the packet that was online, you were referring to some items that are in Exhibit B, which was passed out to us tonight. But because it's an item related to an agenda item, we will add it to the packet posted on the website. So people will be able to see this language that you're referring to.
Yes, correct.
I appreciate that comment, and I appreciate that staff is already attentive to it. All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 1247, a resolution repealing the master fee schedule adopted under Resolution Number 1239 and adopting the new master fee schedule.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Blough. Any further discussion? All right. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The resolution is adopted unanimously. We move on to item number 12, which also involves our Public Works Department. So Silas Richardson is here, and we have a report regarding approval of a public improvement contract to complete the pavement management program 2025 Slurry Seal Project between the City of Gladstone and VSS International Incorporated.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So this agenda item is to seek approval for a contract. The city has worked for Slurry Seal with the City of Hillsborough, piggybacking on an annual Slurry Seal solicitation since 2019. The reason we partner with Hillsborough is they do all the heavy lifting for us and generate a group of local cities to get the best possible price. And so we have VSS International as the company that's been awarded the bid. The packet that you have is made up of two exhibits. The first exhibit is the, it is Exhibit A, which is the, sorry, bid results from the City of Hillsborough's RFP process. Exhibit B is the maps of all the different roads that we're proposing to have slurry sealed this year. The roads are made up and already set in stone in our Street Saver software, which was generated from the pavement management plan done in 2022. But there is some flexibility and some changes that we make. We look at the roads that are determined for the year. We go out and do a site inspection on our own to determine that they're still in a good enough condition for slurry seal. Slurry seal is a treatment that's intended for good-conditioned roads. And the reason we're doing that is to try to capture that pavement condition index at a 71 overall over the next five years. The cost impact is going to be $215,000, and we're recommending to add a 15% contingency of $32,250. So the contract would not exceed $247,250 to get the, the project completed. Are there any questions?
Questions on councilors? We, we do this in the summer months.
Yes.
So it's an ongoing process. You'll come back to us each year for a different set of streets.
Yes.
And we've planned it out to, to do it systematically in this way.
Yes. And once we have the contract signed, we'll have a definite timeframe. They're in town, so I'm assuming that it'll be by the end of August. We've already relayed key dates, like the community festival, school starting, things like that. And the company, VSS Gladstone, did work with them in 2019. They're a good company to work with. They'll take care of most of, well, they'll do their own messaging to, to the community in preparation for things like limbs, low-hanging limbs, parking, and then re-entry times to come back onto the street, dry times, I call it, for the slurry seal. And then we'll do our own notification as well, once the contract is awarded. So it'll be coming up soon.
May, may I just ask on that, I'm looking through Exhibit A, trying to make some sense of it. And I see here in the estimates, in the engineer estimates, for the, the public notification, I see that the, their bid is higher than what the estimate was. Is that because they're doing the outreach on their own?
Yeah, they do their own outreach, and they'll-
And do we get savings on that? Not to cut you off there, but where, where's the savings for us for that number being higher on one end? So that's outreach that we don't have to do?
Potentially. It's a courtesy just on our part to actually reach out to our customers as well. We'll send them out. So it's just a secondary effort to make sure that people know what's going on. It is a little bit more costly, though, yes.
Will this be in the city newsletter as well?
Possibly. I don't know. I haven't, this is my first time at this, so.
I'm, I'm trying to remember. Jackie, do you remember?
Yeah, I think it depends on when we find out that the contractor's going to do the work. If we can get it into the August newsletter, we've got a deadline of next week.
Oh, that's right.
But if it, if it happens in September, we can get it in there. But certainly, we will put the information on social media and the city's website.
Very good. Okay.
One more question.
Sure.
Since I have you here, I'm a member of the community who's often had this question. Maybe we can solve this one here.
Okay.
As I look at this, and it's relevant because we're looking at the slurry seals, there's often a question about the section between, on Webster, between Oakfield and Kason, and who is responsible for that section? Is in fact that a Gladstone responsibility? Is that a county responsibility? Any insight? And I believe this, this is yes. So I'm correct in the area that we're talking about.
I don't have that knowledge. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to research that, and I'd happily get you that answer if I can.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have that answer.
No, that's fine. Nobody ever has, so I figured I'd just ask it here, too.
Yeah. I'll look into it.
Well, my guess is it's Gladstone, but.
Is, is it an area that you think might be an ODOT jurisdiction?
I'm just kind of puppeting questions that I've heard from community members that I haven't had answers to.
Okay.
Or Clackamas County, possibly.
Or Clackamas. That was the, that was the thought.
I think if you're talking about like the intersection of Webster, Kason, that, or are you talking further down Kason?
We're talking the space between, on Webster, between Oakfield and Kason, that stretch between Kason and Oakfield on Webster, is that, a community member happens to be here. So it's a question that's come up a lot. I figured I'd ask it since we're here.
We would have to do other research on that.
To find out for sure. Okay.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this action item?
I can.
All right.
I move to approve a public improvement contract with VSS International Incorporated for the completion of the 2025 Slurry Seal Project as part of the pavement management program, and the amount not to exceed $247,500.
I'll second.
All right. Counselor Corbett moved. Counselor Huckabee seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Counselor Corbett.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The contract is approved. Go forth and slurry those streets. All right. Last item on our regular agenda is to form a committee. I will turn this over to Administrator Betts.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. This staff report is really a long-winded way of saying that we would like three of you to help staff plan the Clackamas City's dinner that Gladstone will be hosting in October. We do have rules that allow the city council to create a council committee to deal with that, any matter that they see necessary. So we wanted to make sure we were following all our, our own rules and publicly bring this to you. I've actually heard from about five of you that are interested. Three really is all we need, but that doesn't mean the rest of you can't be included and we keep you updated. So I will let you decide amongst yourselves who would like to help administration staff plan for this event.
Can I make, I, I was one of those people that jumped on board and said, hey, I'd like to help. And then I realized, October's going to be pretty busy for me with the LOC Convention in Portland. So I would respectfully like to just cross my name off.
Okay. Well, that'll make it easier to pick three out of four instead of three out of five or something.
All right. I appreciate it.
Thank you. But thank you for your interest in doing it. This is one of those networking opportunities that we have. We get together with other mayors and councilors and, and staff from other cities in, in the region, and we always learn good things from them. We had a recent one in West Lynn, where we learned about the Wellamit Locks Project from former Governor Brown, in fact, who was the speaker there, and, and also about a local historical project going on in the site where we met. So they're always good, and it's always great that we can put effort of our own city into this. So.
Mayor, could we do it by order of response? I'm just trying to think of like a fair way to do it.
I was wondering if we could get the date in October. It's not that I could find.
It is.
Fourth Thursday.
Fourth.
Fourth Thursday in October.
Just as a methodology, I'm okay if not.
Okay.
I don't have the emails with me of who responded when, so.
I'm happy to be a part of it. However, I also, I mean, can we do all, can we do all four? If, because I think many hands.
We, we try to have it as three so that it's not a quorum of the council.
Oh, good point. Good point.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I can say I've got total faith in fellow councilors to put on one heck of a good dinner. So I can scratch my name off that list unless you really want me to help, of which I'd be happy to do that, too.
All right. Which, which councilors recall volunteering? Counselor Huckabee, Counselor Blough, Counselor Labonte, and Counselor Corbett? And, and I, well, I think, so Counselor Labonte, if you're backing off and trusting in them, you, you may find yourself busy with other responsibilities around the early part of the fall as well, since you're on the school board. So, so can we say then that Councilors Corbett, Huckabee, and Blough are appointed to that committee? Is there agreement on that? I don't think we need to take a vote necessarily, but it sounds like people are okay with that. And the last time we did it here in Gladstone, we had it at the new clubhouse at the children's course, the golf course. We'll have to find a venue. We'll have to find a recommended source for something to eat, and maybe a topic, a presentation of something good that's going on in Gladstone to share with the community. But I trust all of you can do that. Counselor Huckabee, you have a comment?
Thank you. I'm, I'm excited. As far as I know, this is the first time we formed a committee as councilors to work on the city's dinner, at least since I've been elected. So I'm excited for the opportunity. They're fun.
All right. We have our city council agenda planning document included in the, in the packet tonight. And the only other items that we normally would do now are business carryforward. Administrator Betts, did you have an item you wanted to bring up tonight?
I just wanted to remind you that we're going to have our community open house at the old library site on July 22 in lieu of a work session. But you all have an assignment. So you are required to be there. It's going to be very fun. We're going to have six stations set up in the building. We're going to have six stations set up in the building. We want people to come through the building to see the current condition of the building. But I'm very excited to hear what the community has to say on the future of that space, so please just make sure. You'll be getting an email from me with more details on that, but your participation is mandatory.
I hope everyone can make it there because it will be more effective if we're all there.
I have a question about that.
Yes, Councilor Garland.
We got an email, I received an email about the walk, the station we're going through-
The pump station.
The pump station for tomorrow. And then I thought to myself, well, I wonder if we have, we have to wear closed-toed shoes, long pants, blah, 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 to the library. I better ask.
No.
Okay.
Enter at your own risk. We're even going to see if the HVAC air conditioning still works in the building. It does smell, but I think it's important that people see the current condition of the building because there's a lot of people that think it's move-in ready, and it's not. It is safe to be in. Councilor Labonte joined me. We went for a tour. He's the business liaison. But we're very excited with Mr. Legarza. He does great with these community outreach processes, and I think you will be pleasantly surprised as well.
All right, so keep that on your calendar, plan to be there. Tammy, did we have anyone request to speak business from the audience tonight?
Received no requests.
Okay, and no one online is raising their hand or anything else?
No, they are not.
Okay, all right, it's time for business from the council. I'll start at my right with Councilor Huckabee and move my way down to number six.
Thank you. I don't have much, but before I start in, I was writing my notes and I was like, wow, this seems like deja vu. Has there, have I already given an update about how Juneteenth went? Okay, thank you, because I was like writing this and I was like, I feel like I've already said all these things. So our Juneteenth celebration was on Thursday, the 19th. It was a great event. Many community members from Gladstone and neighboring cities, including Portland, joined us in that. We handed out free books, hot dogs, snacks. There was a speech by Jeremy Woodson, who formerly worked at the ACLU of Idaho and has considerable experience organizing and aspiring predominantly white communities. He shared a message of joy and resilience and presented Gladstone's Juneteenth proclamation that had been previously read by Mayor Milch. There were a lot of resourceful relationships that were developed and will help make next year's event even larger and better. And thank you to the mayor and councilors Mitchell, Blough, and Corbett for attending and supporting the event again this year. Other than that, have a safe, wonderful summer, and please avoid swimming at High Rocks.
Councilor Mitchell.
I'd also like to acknowledge and say thank you to the community members for putting together the Juneteenth celebration. Also, thank you to the police and fire departments for putting on their annual barbecue. I would like to mention that July is Disability Pride Month. The Milwaukee Pride Celebration that did not take place in June was rescheduled for July 26 at 11:00 a.m. at Scott Park. I'd like to reiterate that Music on the Greens is this Friday at 6:00 p.m. at Max Patterson. And then finally, summer events at the library, summer reading is currently going on, storytimes are back. And check out their website for fun family events. For example, tomorrow, they are doing a giant Candy Land activity at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you, Councilor Blough.
Let's see, I wanted to announce that I was appointed to Metro's 50 Year Visioning Committee, and meetings start in September, will not interfere with council duties at all. It's a completely different date. What else? I went to the Second Community Market, which is the first Wednesday in the month, and it is amazing, and I encourage everybody to pop over there. It's be sort of behind High Rocks Restaurant. And also a lovely fourth in the park with Chief Schmerber and Chief Brown and hot dogs, and I always look forward to that every year. And then just also that Janelle Bynum is having a local leaders event, July 28th, 4:30 in Malala, if any councilor members are interested in that. PDX Pride Parade is July 20th, so if you're headed downtown, don't do it that day. And, yep, that's it.
All right, thank you, Councilor Labonte.
Just a couple things real quick. Councilor Huckabee, I do have a different opinion about High Rocks. There's a quick shout-out from my perspective on High Rocks. In my experience, by far the most diverse place I've seen in Gladstone. On any given day, you'll hear numerous languages spoken. You see the lifeguard crew interacting with children, teaching safety, flotation device safety, really engaging with the community. You see the Oregon Patrol come out and engage with the community also. It's a place where you see people overcome their fears. It's a place where you'll see hundreds of people swimming safely 99.9% of the time, and I understand the problems that are there. It is my firmly held belief that High Rocks is an enormous asset to this community as a mind-blowing swimming pool to have in your backyard. And I'm a huge fan, and I'm very thankful that the county was able to get lifeguards there again. I overcame my fare of heights in jumping into water at High Rocks, and I see people do it every day I'm there. It's really a beautiful thing. I would like to mention, as we sit up here, just the, some of the, you know, for members of the, different boards in our community, over the past month, it's been hard, the passing of Justice Mills, the vacating of Patrick Smith from the Planning Commission, long-term servant to our community, house fire for another community member. For me, it's been a time to really reflect on what matters and to try to be a little more understanding with people and that our time is short and we don't know what is going to happen. So to try to lead with a little bit of love and some positivity, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Councilor Corbett.
I don't have any announcements, but I want to say the Juneteenth experience was a great experience. We had a fantastic speaker, so I appreciate all the work that you put into that. So if you don't get a chance to go, if you didn't get a chance to go this year, I would definitely make it a plan as far as going next year. There were great books for kids that you were giving away for free. I think there's a lot of education that can happen through those, through the Juneteenth Experience, the day, the celebration of freedom. So I appreciate everything that you put into it and look forward to it again next year. I did have an opportunity also to go on the, and I don't know if this is what they call it, but the Art Walk, you know, on Portland Avenue. And I see that as something that's really up and coming. I love the fact that cities are doing that now and the investment that we're putting there, so I'd love to continue to see that. Thank you.
So I want to say congratulations, Councilor Blough, that's awesome. I love that. I can't wait to hear more about it and everything that's going to come about with that. So I did attend the 4th of July picnic with my grandson, and it was a great time. I appreciate all the efforts that people put to planning things. And much like the Juneteenth celebration, I know that in planning events year after year after year, they just get, you know, they get bigger every time, every time. And at some point, it just, it's mind-blowing to look back and know what you did, so keep up that good work because it, you know, it's important to bring people together. Administrator Betts sent out the information that the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park did receive the grant from the Metro Nature and Neighborhood for the bird blind. And I just, the fact that we're going to have another park on our map that brings people to Gladstone is so big. And the work that we've done with the parks over, you know, the last, I don't know, 10 years that I've really dove into, putting my efforts into being on my soapbox about the parks. I just can't thank everybody enough for all your support there because I believe that the pickleball people, community, and the other things that happen at Max Patterson and how nice our parks look, everything that happens down at Meldrum Bar and all of the club teams that come down and utilize that park and engage children in playing together and being together and getting out of their homes and away from their cell phones and that, that whole thing. I mean, we could talk for hours about that. But everything that our parks have to offer make everyone in this community better and bring us closer together. And I just can't thank everybody enough for understanding and seeing that. And I will leave you with, it is summertime. Do yourself a favor and teach your children to swim.
Thank you, counselor. You know, I visited High Rocks for the very first time last year just to, you know, manage to walk down there and get past all those big rocks and everything to get close to the water. And I can understand both viewpoints. It's very frightening in the early spring when weather gets warm for the first time to know that some people don't take the precautions they should in jumping into a very cold river. And that is something we will have to deal with. But Counselor Labonte, you articulated very clearly the benefits of having a site like that and what it does for the community. And it is one of our designated city parks, just as Max Patterson is. And every time we have an event at Max Patterson that I've attended lately, often with members of my own extended family, I've had a greater appreciation for what it offers to this community. A place where children can be on a playground and adults can be socializing and everybody feels safe and close. And most of the events, we're bringing in people from the outside who enrich our experience as well. So it's great that we're able to do that. None of you mentioned, I'm glad I got the chance, I was invited to participate in the ribbon cutting back on June 20th for the Tap House on Arlington, Arlington Tap House. And I see great posts on social media now from people that are trying all the various kinds of cuisines they have there. There are up to four different food carts, Thai food, sushi, Mediterranean, and Mexican, tacos primarily, and other things. So we're getting exposure to other cultures through food, to one another through chance encounters, and just the opportunity to sit down and share a meal and sample, you know, some new beverages from somebody who's devoted his life to doing that in a creative way that brings the community together. So these little things, and they stir up the possibility in us and the idea that, gee, what else could we do? What else would be good for this community? And that's where the open house at the old library facility is really, I think, going to inspire us to some other things that could be part of this community and could enhance that experience that we have together. So Gladstone's a great place to live, a great place to grow up. I see Ralph Mattiel here, who reminds us on Facebook all the time of the people who, for this was their growing up experience in life. And there were times in the city when the young people had a place to roller skate, go bowling, and go to the movies. And some of that stuff isn't here now, but we're kind of recreating and reforming new opportunities for teenagers, for families, for young children. And as we reach that place, Clackamas County in the state of Oregon now is a place where elders outnumber children, which means that a senior center, in a community center that places an emphasis on service to senior adults is a very important part of our community. And a school system that recognizes the needs of family with children and a city that has parks that serve the needs of families with children are also very important parts of what we do in this community. So it's a great place to be of service. It's a pleasure to work with all of you. I'm glad there are seven of us now moving forward and coming together and each bringing special skills and strengths and willingness to spend their time on doing things that make this a great place to live. So I want to thank staff for presenting a good meeting tonight. I grew up in a part of the country where weather was very rarely a hindrance to doing things, and I know that in Oregon, you have to schedule everything around when you have good enough weather. So a lot of our public works projects that need to be done have to be done in the summertime. And if you want your house painted or your roof fixed, you've got to do that in the summertime, too. And that leaves you very little time for all the other fun stuff that generally goes on in the summertime. But people have adjusted their lives and managed to do it, and so I think it's great. So we're next scheduled to meet, let's see, tomorrow, tomorrow at 4 o'clock is the pump station open house. And as Counselor Garlington reminded us, long pants, closed-toed shoes, you're walking down to thing down to get to water level. And then we have our, oh, the 22nd, instead of a work session, is the old library walkthrough. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Mitchell. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Corbett.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, motion passes. We are adjourned at 7:58 p.m. Thank you.